Kelly will be here, Bob will be here.
Yeah. All right, why don't we open the meeting?
Yep.
It's time. Want to start with the?
Should start with the public hearing on the grant funds.
Yeah. All right, so at this time, we'll open a public hearing for RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five B. We accept grant funds from FEMA in the amount of ten thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars and nineteen cents.
And this was for firefighting equipment.
I remember that actually.
Does that need a second? If so, I second.
Yes, it needs a second.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I assume you're not here to speak on that particular matter?
No, but I'd love to know what that grant was for.
Uh, yep, the fire chief applied for a grant for firefighting equipment to partially outfit the new fire engine that's coming in May.
Yep, got you, great.
Every little bit helps, yes.
Absolutely.
All right. What do you think?
Um, you can leave it open for?
Yeah, a while, just in case, yeah.
Yeah, a while does it? Yep.
All right. You want to sign stuff?
Then you've got to do the public hearing regarding the proposal to set the speed limit on Old Voice Road.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing regarding the proposal to set the speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour on Old Voice Road. Beginning about fifty yards of the southernmost curve in the road. Node eighteen on the twenty-twenty-four New Hampshire DOT node map. The entirety of Riverland Road, the entirety of Oxbo Pond Road, and the entirety of Lois Lane.
I would second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, so that public hearing is open.
Node map.
I get that.
Oh, good.
Oh.
David Day of thirty-four Oxbo Pond Road.
Okay.
That's convenient.
I've got the letter in the mail, and I had just a couple of quick questions to better understand. I'm wondering what the root conversation starter on this topic was. Anybody have any idea?
Actually, yes, we had a visit from a young family whose name escapes me. Who walk regularly um in that area. They live and and walk in that area. With a couple of uh small children, actually one.
One in a carriage.
And a kid, right. So, so, you know, toddler and a a baby essentially. But their concern is the speed at which traffic is is traveling those roads. So, that started um sort of started the whole thing. Each of us um has driven that road multiple times. Um, I'm also a member of the fire department, so I've responded down there multiple times for several incidents, so. So, we're familiar with that.
Understood.
Um, so, the proposal is to reduce the speed to twenty-five miles. Not that first stretch of Old Voice by um by the the doggy daycare place.
Yeah, kind of from there back.
For that.
Once you go through that, those two really sharp curves.
Yeah. So, that's what it's all about, so.
Worth worth noting, I just wanted to be aware.
Yeah. Sure.
Because it guides some of my questions to say, you know, I'm not saying I'm for or against it.
Mm-hmm.
Been on the road for twelve years.
Mm-hmm.
But I want to share with the town was, I have never seen any speed enforcement on that road. Police actively sitting as a enforcement for that area. And I brought to the town, you know, maybe five, six years ago, there were a thousand vehicles, I think, in a three-month span going to the beach. Or traveling traversing that road, which is a highly traveled road in the summertime. And I get the fact that, yeah, there are some people who go quick.
Yeah.
We we are walkers with our family and dogs. Uh, but I just wanted to explore the town to say, before we throw money and resources at something, how about we leverage what we already have? The police force to, lack of better words, do their job.
Right, so.
See if that makes an impact, because I I I I drive a lot, and I've seen in the last four or five years, I commute a hundred miles a day down to Massachusetts from here. And I've seen a lot of increased speeds due to lack of enforcement over since COVID, really. And the police, the state police have acknowledged, you know, lack of staffing and abilities to get that done. I think that's what we might be seeing. And putting a sign up that's five miles per hour lower? I mean, in all reality, with you five sitting there, do you expect that to make a difference for eighty percent of the people who are probably breaking that speed limit? From out of town, going to beach, or going to work, or doing something on that road that isn't a resident? Is that going to make a difference? Because I certainly don't take it well.
Yeah.
So, I explore the idea for you guys to take a little bit of time and talk with the police department and find out what their history is, because I doubt there's been a ticket issue for speeding. I don't think there's ever been an enforcing, you know, a a practice of sitting a vehicle with a radar gun. And I think presence and enforcement would deter hugely than just a sign that says five miles per hour less. And so, my my input is, I could probably be for it if there was more facts to go behind it to say, what's really being done?
Hmm.
Because if you have these rules and nobody's enforcing it, what value does it bring? And if you make the change, it's still not going to be enforced. So, I'm just throwing at you guys to say, can we use the resources we have for research and find out if we can try that first?
Yeah, we have very little resources.
Yeah.
And multiple complaints of speeding in the the other place where we're getting a lot of complaints is Old Jolmington Road. Which is about as far away from here as you could get in Stovey and Canterbury.
Gotcha.
Up in Sherwood Forest.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So, it's um and and we have one officer on. We have one vacancy for a full-time officer that has been open for a year, I believe. So, they're they're theme. So, they did do a speed survey there about two months ago.
Hmm, a month ago.
About a month ago, yeah.
I've seen on posts, I've seen on the posts now recently, yeah, some.
No, so you you would not have noticed it because this was a literally a black box that was.
A black box, I was on a telephone call right by the dog park.
There you go. So, you did notice it.
I'm aware. I did, yes.
Yeah, so I think the highest speed, if I remember, was fifty fifty-two. Um, but in general, I think the speeds were much lower than.
Fifty-two was like one car.
In a, yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
That one guy was, yeah, yeah.
Thirteen hundred vehicles.
But I just, I I understand the town's resources are low, um, but for what it's worth, I do have security cameras. And some of you may know that I work with the police to try and help the beach area and keep the junk out of that area of town.
Yeah.
So, I have some cameras and visibility to neighboring cameras we've shared through technology. And around COVID nineteen-twenty, we would see the police out there just doing the drive-bys, patrolling regularly, forty to fifty times in a year. You know, just going out, coming to the end of the road, turn around and leave. It's a nice patrol, just to have the presence.
Presence, exactly.
The last three or four years, you can count on one hand per year, how many times we're seeing it out there.
Yeah.
Aside from a call, I have put a call in or two, they've shown up. That taken out, it's an neglected part of town now. Where it used to just be part of the nightly patrol or daily patrol, I'll go up to the gas station, I'll go get a candy bar, I'm gonna hop over the bridge, not over towards the bridge and go over to this part of town.
Yeah.
Because it is separated from town via Route Four. And it's not directly connected. So, I just share with you guys the visibility that we see in the neighborhood, there's not as much police presence happening.
Okay.
And it could be done more regularly to help curb that.
Yeah.
And the visuals that come from that.
Yeah, we'll certainly share that with the police chief.
Yeah.
And the traffic count the day we did the survey, was it a day only or?
No, it was a week, a week, I think it was five days.
It was a week.
Yeah. Average was thirteen hundred?
No, it was thirteen hundred total.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, thirteen hundred vehicles total. Um, and, you know, a month ago, I'm trying to read the temperature a little bit, probably.
No, it wasn't that active, it was.
Yeah, yeah.
I just remember I had let the town know because the road was so bad and was not getting managed. And I had seen the numbers, it was just, it was like a thousand in a week, it was a crazy amount, but.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to share my my thoughts, observations in that, you know, living at the end of the road with family.
Thank you, yeah, we appreciate it. Yeah.
Similar feeling, um, but I just don't feel like there are any speed limits, signs are going to solve any problems.
Yeah.
So, I wanted to bring some ideas and just share with you guys.
Have you had a yourself had a an issue with the speed on that road recently?
No, no, I don't think so. I mean, I commute in the morning, back in the afternoon, like around now, and the weekend is running around, but, no.
No, the 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 box per se didn't really notice that there was a problem with speeding. And it seemed like part of the problem was walkers feel like the cars are going faster. So, we checked to make sure.
Absolutely, I would say that that is a valid observation. Um, off the dirt road, the dirt is at the end.
Hmm.
The first two sections of paved area, I would say, yeah, I can say it feels, I feel like the road is a foot narrower than most roads. When you have two cars coming at each other, it just feels tighter than most roads. And you also have some significant business traffic. You've got larger vehicles that could be going on, whether they be a pickup truck, box truck, you have a gentleman that does a lot of work with trailer trucks. And so, you've got the landscaper with the bigger vehicles, they're not just little four-door sedans.
Hmm.
Um, and I think that presents it, but then those corners, those two corners are, and there's no if, ands about about it. Yeah. They're blind, and when you're going the speed limit of thirty right now, you you're at risk.
Hmm.
It's pretty tight, most vehicles are not on their side cutting those corners. So, that raises the risk too.
Yeah.
And then throw a walker or a person, walking an animal or a stroller. I'm surprised nobody's been hurt yet, hurt yet, I guess.
And I think that's the other thing we've talked about is signage for the corners.
For the two corners, the chevrons, the signs slow down in both directions.
Yeah. Yeah.
For that very reason, because those are, when I went down and drove, they're sharp corners.
Yeah.
Going into a shadow, so.
Yeah. And the other, I mean, the the one caveat made up this conversation, but there's that house on the corner of the first part, first corner. They've added a a mobile home, and they're using a driveway that's not zoned, that's right on the corner. And it's, there there's a pickup truck and another smaller vehicle that's living in the mobile home adjacent. And I've almost hit them twice, just, they're just backing in and out, and they're in the corner. And something's bound to happen at some point, I think, that, you know, because of the speed, there are some people not attentive to the road and speed.
Is the driveway new?
It's not a driveway, they're driving into the grass.
Ah, interesting, okay.
They've added a mobile home, I think, for family members to assist their care and family.
Yeah.
So, they're just parking vehicles next to the mobile home, which is not a zoned driveway, or in addition, it's just been parked there.
Yeah.
Been there for a year or two.
Okay.
And I'm not looking to end up with problems, but.
No, no, understood, yeah.
Move the vehicles to the driveway instead of this grassy corner, which is a blind kind of treacherous corner.
Hmm.
Yeah, okay.
So, but for what it's worth, I I don't know if I support or I don't, but I would love to know, because at least we do more. You know, there's already paid resource going out.
Yeah. That it is, all right, thank you.
Sorry to take so much time, but.
No, no, good conversation.
No, no, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we'll.
Yeah, that's that's why we have public hearings.
Yep, great.
Thank you. All right, Ken, do you want us to sign?
Let's start signing.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking before, uh, too much more time goes by. All right, first item I have is a cons payable manifest in the amount of five hundred forty thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars and ninety-four cents.
No. Don't know about that ninety-four cents.
Could I get a second?
Yes, so I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Next item is a payroll manifest in the amount of fifty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can we sign in? Anyone here?
Yeah, the stamp is on there.
Oh, can we just sign?
Can we just sort of?
Just.
Yeah.
Oh, free range signing.
Is that new?
You can write big. Oh, I love it. Oh, I gotta write so big. That was fun.
Free range Beth, look at her.
I'm tired and I got a pen, watch out.
Yeah, she definitely. Oh, boy. All right, next is a uh interim transfer from the TD Bank operating account to the Elkins.
Lucia Elkins.
Yeah.
Sick and poor.
In the amount of twenty-five dollars. Okay.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. So, um, though, what is the, why is the language return it to the trust?
Because earlier in the year for a welfare case, um, you took out a certain amount from that trust for the burial of someone. Um, but then that extra twenty-five dollars didn't end up being spent. So, to clean things up, we're putting it back in the trust.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, next item is a uh application for property tax credits from a veteran. It looks like we did receive a DD two fourteen, it is for tax map two fifty-nine lot fifteen. And the amount is five hundred dollars. Do we need a motion or we just sign it? We just sign it?
It's the third.
Thank you. I've had days like yours.
I know. This looks like a a well-loved form.
Hmm.
It's like post everything that comes up.
Exactly.
I know. It's got coffee on it, so it's good, you know, it's good.
And is this the same? It looks like. Tell if it's. Or is this a different, no, this has got to be a different one.
Okay.
We saw the tax credit?
Yeah. But I'm a little confused because it looks like we have two forms.
Oh, that was supposed to be papered up together.
Oh, okay, that that explains it, okay. So, we need to sign in two places now, okay.
Follow the trail of the blue posties.
Yeah. All right, there's that one, and then I'll attach the uh other part of the application.
Was that a note? Can I just see that for a second?
Sure, cool. Cool, thank you. All right. Is this a timber, yeah, timber tax? Uh, for lot two-two-nine, uh, excuse me, map two-two-nine lot one and lot oh-oh-one dash one. And lot two-two-nine dash oh-two. Uh, the first one is in the amount of two thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and twenty-nine cents. Second is in the amount of four hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. And once again, with these, we're just signing a little bit. Three places.
Already. Does that mean they're done now? Haven't seen any logging trucks coming out Hackleboro for a while.
Oh.
That one is.
Yeah.
I think everyone's just getting cleaned up.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, uh, we've still got a few minutes, so why don't we look next at the uh minutes, yeah, from the October twentieth twenty-twenty-five public card, I'm just gonna look at myself, because I've got them on that.
Um, there was only one uh suggestive edit, so I didn't print out copies for you guys.
Understood.
On line three-twelve, under the Conservation Commission report. It said, uh, they will be consulting with local hunters on safety, some signage that went up to see how effective it has been. And the correction is that went up to get their opinions on whether signage like this is effective. So, that's it.
All right, so I'll move the minutes as amended.
You were polled.
No, no, but I mean, I wasn't here for the minutes, I'm not.
But you were polled, and you were polled.
Second?
Oh, yes, second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anybody wish to abstain?
I'm abstaining.
Favor?
I wasn't here.
All right?
Sorry. As I said, kick me if I doze.
I will not kick you. All right, where do you want to go from here, sir? Forgot.
They need to close the hearings.
Yeah, we need to close the two hearings.
All right, anybody hear about the uh public hearing on RSA thirty-one ninety-five B? Seeing none, I'll close that hearing. Do we need a motion to close?
Yep.
Motion to close the meeting?
I will second that.
No, you got to vote to approve the acceptance of the protest.
Oh, yes, we do.
And then you can close it.
Then we can close it, all right, so I will make a motion that we accept the grants fund, the grant funds from FEMA in the amount of ten thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars and nineteen cents.
Yes, please, I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? And then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that public hearing is closed.
Who would vote no to accepting ten thousand dollars?
I suppose it depends on if there's any attachment.
Hmm, okay.
All right. All right, so the public hearing regarding the proposal to set the speed limit to twenty-five on Old Voice Road. Um, I guess what what did the selectmen think?
I still think it's a good idea, especially if we're going to follow it up with a signage that we already discussed. It's, it's, you know, even though the um this speeding isn't a problem from what we've seen, those corners need to be better marked. And it should be twenty-five, so.
In agreement?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I will motion that we set the speed, we have to mo- motion to set it, correct? Make a motion to set the speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour on Old Voice Road, beginning fifty yards south of the southernmost curve in the road. Node eighteen on the twenty-twenty-four NH DOT node map, the entirety of Riverland Road, the entirety of Oxbo Pond Road, and the entirety of Lois Lane. That is my motion.
All right, I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was very exciting.
Are they gonna put the chevrons out when they post that to twenty-five, so they'll put all at the same time?
Yeah.
And they're not painting the road, they're just putting the yellow, okay.
Right.
So, now do we need to close that public hearing?
Yes, we do.
All right, so I uh will make a motion that the public hearing for regarding the proposal to set the speed limit to twenty-five on Old Voice Road be closed.
I'll second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, that hearing is closed. Still got about five minutes. Maybe you see that we can uh.
HB's.
Do business, apply for local emergency operation plan update grant.
Yeah.
Uh, I've had with the fire chief today, we have the application. Um, I'm waiting for a form from the uh Homeland Security. And we should be, we'll be working on that next week.
Correct.
Um, let's see. Streetlights.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think, I don't know if I forwarded you that email from Unitile?
You did.
Um, they, there's four streetlights that they will switch over to LEDs at no charge. They do need a police officer for a detail on.
Yeah.
Center Road and Southwest Road. I asked where the streetlights were. So, there's one on Southwest Road, uh, approximately a hundred and fifty feet south of the intersection of Kimble Pond Road.
Yeah.
Right across from the old Hallow residence, yeah. There's one on Center Road, right over by the cemetery. There's one on Hackleboro Road, in front of the town office. And there's one on Old Tilt Road, which is actually right at the corner of Center Center Road, right near Old Tilt Road comes out. Um, and then there's one on West Road, right at the north, ninety-three North on and off ramp, right at the basel. There is one at the southbound, but there's one on the northbound, so. Um, I did.
So, Unitile, Unitile didn't weigh in on the necessity of those, right? That was another.
It's a lot, this is just the energy committee or um somebody had talked to them about.
Right, right.
Changing these over to LEDs, and they said they would do it at no cost, um.
Because the, there was another uh person who was going to be polled about those that were going, was going to weigh in at the necessi- how many we have and the necessity of them. Because I'm, I'm just curious.
That's up to you guys.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought they need, they were going to weigh in on like, why is there one?
Who was that?
Well, that's just it, it was one of the, it was one of the um, um, I believe it was the um, the people that Ruth um, and Beth met at a conference that was going to be doing another.
The only, the only uh correspondence I received was from Unitile.
Oh, all right, well. So.
I received the original correspondence from the energy committee, but then I didn't receive anything else except from Unitile.
Well, if they're, if they're still willing to swap them over, that's still going to save us some. Does it, does he give a, an estimate on how much it'll save us?
They're gonna be nuclear bright too, if they're going LEDs.
So, what do we need to, do we need to approve that? I'm just curious, because one of the conversations we had was finding out how many we had, but if they're necessary. Like, I, a number of people said, why is that one?
I guess the necessity is up to you guys.
Oh.
What I would, that would be my guess.
I didn't know if there was a.
There's no, there's no.
Like DOT says you have to have a street light at this kind of intersection or whatever.
Not right on.
Oh, all right.
Ken?
Do they charge us per piece or per night, or how does it work on payment on those?
I think there's a.
You mean for the the utility bill?
Yeah.
We get one utility bill for outside street lighting.
Yeah.
That's it, doesn't designate second ones.
It's gonna save them money to switch over from.
Yeah.
Here now to LED.
Absolutely.
But even more if we don't have, if we have a poll that we don't need, but might as well if they're willing to do it for free, and we can discuss the rest of it later.
Yeah, I I guess, you know, in the center of town, I think, and Randy, I remember a conversation you and I had about lighting and children and buses and and all that. But I guess I'm I'm questioning why on one-thirty-two by by Joe and Tony's old house? And why, you know, as you said, in in one direction at the exit eighteen and not the other? It's just, that part I I'm just not getting.
That sounds like something for further um.
Well, because if you're driving like most people and you blink, you miss that corner, if there's no light to tell you to take a right or a left. Most people fly by there, and if you don't know that corner's coming up, I think with no tra- with no overhead light, you might.
Yeah, but for any, on any road that you're driving, any right-hand turn you're taking, you could say the same thing.
Hmm.
Yeah.
So.
I just think with those roads, they're only at the, those corners.
At the big end of the.
Ninety-three North, if you're not paying attention, that ramp sneaks up on you, especially with the gas station closed.
Bob, do you have any?
I was gonna say, we have some, we have some members, the audience that have been around for a while, anybody that includes why that was there?
I don't remember how or why those lights were originated, but I I would challenge why the town paid for street lighting on a DOT road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't believe the town should be paying for that.
Yeah. Well, that.
But in the center, I, yes, I get it, you know, the only caution in every tale is, uh, warn the homeowners if these lights change, because suddenly it's as bright as the day.
Yeah.
Underneath the light.
Yeah.
It's a more attractive color than the old yellow stuff.
Yeah.
But it definitely does change.
It's a different, yeah, much different.
It's static, so you just let people know. I would certainly switch over the ones here in the center, because I think the ones in the center serve a necessary purpose.
Yeah, yeah, agreed.
The ones on the DOT roads, I would question why the town's paying for those.
Yeah.
Ah, but who do you question? Who that might actually answer you?
Unitile.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Unitile, I'm not, I'm not the state's not paying for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
But are you against having a light there?
It just seems odd.
It just seems sort of oddly random.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I mean, really, outside of the center of town, we have literally two streetlights. Why there? I guess it's my...
We should find out why.
I've been riding around, trying to, yeah, trying to figure it out.
Maybe we think, uh, little kids there then, at the time, huh?
Maybe, but that's as good a, an explanation as any. But maybe, but, you know, school kids, you know, as, as you and I talked about, Randy.
Yeah, you'd have to ask where the school bus stop, like me.
Yeah.
Although they tend to go driveway to driveway these days, but if there was a, if there was a, a long time ago, if there was a school bus stop and, you know, dark in the morning, it might have been a street light, but it
Yeah. Certainly not now, though.
Been a long time since there was a school bus stop across from, uh, that John Tony's.
Do you have a number for, um, Unitile? I'd be happy to call them and see if anybody has any information.
I've been in contact, emailed with the person that's in charge of this, so I can talk to them and
Yeah, just...
and confirm that they'll, we can do the ones in the center, but hold off on the ones on the DOT road.
Yeah.
Get more information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To me makes sense.
That'd be great, thank you. Yeah, I was gonna take that off your list, and you put it right back on yours, thank you.
Anything further on streetlights at this point?
I don't think, oh, but speaking of lights, there is a light bulb out in the town hall. Up in the ceiling.
Okay.
Who do I tell? You? Then, it is the one by the front door, uh, on the old Tilton roadside.
Okay, I'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Alright, why don't we move on? It looks like we've got at least some of the Budget Committee here, and I know everyone's time is valuable, so why don't we start that discussion? Um, one of the, if we can, I think we can get most, if not all of you.
Bob, if you talk with Kelly, is Kelly coming? Is Kelly coming?
Uh, I guess she was.
Alright.
Kelly is gonna, uh, probably be, uh, black and something.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, you did?
Yeah, so that she could be here.
I would probably be there.
Oh, okay. Cause that was the last we heard from her, so, alright, well.
I'll let her know.
Yeah, you're right in front of the, uh, the heat source.
Just letting Kelly know, just in case.
Yeah.
She's gotten lost in, in space. No, they just, they canceled it. So, and I'm betting there's Kelly. Hey, Kelly, the budget part of the meeting is about to start.
Yep. Just for the record, Bob Scarpone is here, but not here.
Okay, Bob is here?
Yeah, here I am.
Alright. I think we've got all of this also electronically, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
No, the, not the...
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Um, we're gonna start, uh, we're gonna try and focus most of the discussion on the Ares report. We're gonna start with some other budgetary items. One is healthcare. I think everybody knows that the healthcare company we signed on with for two thousand twenty-five, we were notified in May that they're going out of business in June, so we had to go to a different, uh, healthcare company called School Care. They had their annual meeting today, Cal and I attended. They, their rates are not out yet, but they will be out, uh, November tenth, being what they're shooting for. They are looking at increase anywhere between eight and thirty-five percent, depending, depending on experience and size of the unit. So, uh, again, they're hoping to get those rates out here, uh, in the next couple of days. Uh, we did meet with the Health Trust. We had been with the Health Trust for quite a few years before. We went over to NHIT. They are allowing, they have a two-year lockout, but they have waived that for people that were with NHIT that went out, that, when they went out of business. Uh, we met with them. Their rates, uh, compared to the School Care rates that we had for the re- no twenty-five are approximately thirteen percent higher on the zero deductible, and, um, they're about fifteen percent higher on the, on the high deductible plan that is eligible for HSA. So that's kind of a real quick on healthcare. We're waiting to get here back from, again, School Care and another company called CGI. So hopefully, at our next meeting, we can have some, some better numbers on healthcare. Uh, but whatever they are, they will be up from last year. The CID. You guys all have a, the planning board, uh, social labs are planning, the town office staff have been working on a CID that, uh, is well overdue. We finally more or less ironed one out. I'm not gonna go through it line by line, but I just wanna go over some potential capital, uh, projects in two thousand twenty-six. One's the Highway Department with a sliding water tank of eighteen thousand dollars. We have, uh, cap reserve money in the Highway Department cap reserve equipment line for that. They do need to get a new highway truck. I think anybody who's been watching our budget, our repair bills have gone way up. They'd like to replace the T-one, which is a two thousand eleven International. The price is right around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The, if we order it in March or April like we have in the past, we probably won't see it until January of fourth and seventh. So, we're looking at using a hundred and twenty-five thousand from the truck capital reserve account, and then use some money from the, uh, equipment cap reserve account, and then potentially tax dollars, so.
Do you want questions, Ken, or do you want to finish?
Sure, sure, on that, on these, well, let me run down through these real quick, and then, then we'll take some questions. We have, on here, I have highway, uh, waste oil burner for twenty thousand dollars. We've been fortunate enough to be getting rid of our used waste oil up at the transfer station to, uh, a local, uh, repair shop, car repair shop. Then they said that they didn't want anymore, and found another, uh, local person that, to take it. Then he said he didn't want it anymore, so we were able to go back, and the, the repair shop said that they would take it. But it, we don't have a contract with anybody. The concern is that at some point, we're not gonna have anybody to take it. And, um, the cost of it, of getting rid of it, uh, through Clean Harbors or one of the waste companies is very exorbitant. So the thought was that we could install a waste oil burner up at the highway garage, at the municipal building, in the, out in the Bay Area. That is the area where the doors open and close a lot in the wintertime, and we probably see the most benefit from it. Again, this is, we don't have, we don't have any money set aside for it, it's twenty thousand dollars. And, and like I say, this is potential. This is, I'm trying to give you guys kind of a heads up, and then we'll meet in, again in December, and, and try and iron out the real, the real, uh, meat of the budgets. We don't have the operating budgets yet, so we're not sure where that's gonna go. There's still a lot of questions out there now, so we, but I wanted to put this on the horizon for you. The Fire Department, they need to replace Rescue One. It's got rust issues with the frame and, uh, body, cab, things like that. The fire chief, uh, with the new fire truck coming, they are gonna move all the heavy rescue equipment to the new fire engine. So the rescue truck will not be needed for that. Rescue truck will more or less answer medical emergency calls and, um, other calls similar to that. So he, his thought would be to move the two thousand twenty-one Ford F-two-fifty Command Car to the Rescue One spot and purchase a new Command Car. It actually, he actually puts on more miles on that car, um, so we thought that that would be a better use. And there's a hundred thou- there's, there's more than enough money in the Rescue Truck Fund. Uh, the balance of, at nine thirty twenty-five was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So there's plenty of money to buy a new pickup truck, basically, and outfit it, and, and make that move. And the police department would like to buy a cruiser for sixty-seven thousand dollars. And that is to replace a, uh, seven or eight-year-old cruiser, so. Those are the potentials. I think, uh, in the, the paper that I sent out, that we sent out via email, said that, uh, gave some balances of the cap reserve accounts. Again, the highway equipment, we have a hundred and fifteen thousand. Uh, the highway truck, we have a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. The loader, we have a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Rescue truck, one seventy-eight. Fire, fire, firefighting equipment, we have forty-two thousand. And, uh, building maintenance line, we have sixteen thousand, so. Just some balances. We do our last bond payment for the bridge, van car, and cruisers. It was in twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six, it's fifty-two thousand five hundred, that's the last payment. We will be bonding the remainder of the fire truck, uh, cost. It's four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and the estimated costs are around fifty thousand dollars a year for ten years, so. That, we're in a very good financial picture right now with our, our long-term debt, so. So, questions?
Uh, well, no, our hearing's done.
Well, that was easy.
Actually, I would say that the, uh, CID is a lot more reasonable than CIDs that have been submitted in the past. So I would congratulate, uh, Planning Board and our office team on having it be realistic. And for those of you who don't remember the history, it used to be the, the Candygram, right? It was had the grab bag of everything that everybody might ever want someday, because if they didn't put it in, you know, they didn't get there, and it was crazy. So this looks pretty reasonable. Quick questions on some of the highway stuff. The, uh, water tank makes sense. Uh, the waste oil burner, the last time we talked about that, Ken, we were having a challenge figuring out how to transport the oil
Mm-hmm.
from the transfer station to the municipal building. How much could you carry, how do you move it, carry it? And then Kevin, if it spilled some of it, it just killed the, the cost of cleaning up something that might spill on the trip.
But it says it's for the transfer station, not for the municipal station.
It would be, the waste oil burner itself would be located at the municipal building.
But the oil is coming from the transfer station.
Oil will be coming from the transfer station.
So I don't know, has, has there been new thinking about how to handle transfers?
So the proposal was, they have, I don't know if you've been up the transfer station, I don't know if you've seen the big metal cages, the rectangular metal cages with the plastic bit in it?
Yeah.
But they'd get those for free. And you can get one of those and get a, uh, electric transfer pump, transfer it over. They would put one of those in the back of one of the F-five-fifties, drive it up to the, uh, highway garage, and then transfer it over into a tank up there. Is there risk? Yeah, there is. Yeah, and, and, you know, so that, that was one of the thoughts. The other thought was that, um, that the, we put a waste oil burner at the transfer station itself, but it really isn't set for that, where would you use it, so.
Hopefully, you'd just be incinerating your oil for no benefit.
Right, right.
Well, we still don't, have we cleared up the issue about what happens if it's contaminated and?
Yeah, and, um...
How do we figure that out, and what happens if it is?
And, and there are no easy ways of determining whether it's contaminated with, um, with, uh, antifreeze or something like that. I spoke with the vendor, they, the, the proposal that they gave us, there is a filter, a pre-filter, or two pre-filters and then a filter, and they're confident that, that would filter out any kind of contaminants, um, that might occur in that. And they're, they're UL approved, they're EPA approved, um, so, yeah.
Uh, on the truck, what, how many crew do we have, and how many trucks did we plow with last year and the year before? Maybe we just put down a truck.
So, at, today...
Interesting question.
We have two Highway Department employees. As of Thursday, we will have one. However, I interviewed one today, and it seemed pretty promising. There are five, five pile routes. We have five, well, including the F-five-fifties, we have five vehicles. We have had seasonal drivers the past couple of years to assist with the full-time drivers. We're in discussion with a couple of seasonal people right now. So we're hopeful that we will have a full crew to staff all five vehicles to plow this winter. Hopeful, yeah.
Did we plow last year with, with four?
No, with five.
We did?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I was just asking John to say, okay, what, what does it, will it look like if you plow with four? Because a lot of, if you lose somebody, then that, that truck's just gonna sit idle.
It is doable, and he, he said, you know, we do what we can, and, um, it's just that, that's, you know, the optimum is five, and that's what we try to, try to do.
They'll just leave off Hackleboro, Bob, don't worry about it.
I like driving on lower surfaces. Alright, uh... The Fire Department stuff makes total sense, thank you Fire Chief for coming up with something that's not a quarter of a million-dollar rescue truck.
Yeah.
Or at least, when we have the money for it. And then as far as the police car goes, boy, I can remember the fight we had when we wanted to add the second police car. I don't know, Bob, you remember that?
Yes, I do. Wasn't it?
Wasn't it?
It was easy.
Oh, and now we have four.
Yeah, and, and part of the reason for that is that, uh, recruitment and retention has been difficult. We've had a vacancy for a police officer for over a year, and part of the package that we're offering is a take-home cruiser, um, for anybody that lives within thirty miles of the town, so. And that's, that is the...
What if we had, what if we had three police cruisers and we gave them a Honda Civic to commute it?
And that is, well, I will say, that is the norm of all surrounding municipalities. All the towns around are offering a, a take-home cruiser now, pretty much.
No, I understand, yeah.
For a few years, we were doing leases instead of the new cruisers, right? So it's...
We, we did.
The money's split, and it's better to buy than to lease now?
Yeah, I...
There were financed leases to a zero residual, so that at the end we owned it, so it's just a fancy way what we did on the bond issue was, and then this, cause the second tranche rolled into a bond. That's on, it's paid off
Right.
next year.
Yeah, yeah.
And they got they, they planned on replacing them in five years, and they're, it's seven years now. So they actually got more life out of them than they expected.
So the two that were still, or it looks like we have two payments still on a bond that included cruisers? Which cruisers were those?
No, we...
It says Bridge Command Car for cruisers.
There's, there's one payment left on that, that's in twenty-six.
Okay. So are, is that for one of these four cruisers? Or do we have more cruisers than the four?
That is, that is for two of the cruisers that we have right now that are seven years old, or like, no, those, I'm sorry, those are four years old. So those we paid off.
Unit one and unit two. So we have six cruisers?
We have five.
No.
Four cruisers and the chief's car or something?
Right, the chief's car, yeah.
Okay, so they're the twenty-twenty-one cruisers that these are for?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, these are the two thousand twenty-one cruisers.
Okay.
And again, there's a, there's a, a delay on when you order them. You're gonna wait six, six months to nine months to get them, and then you have to equip them and, and all that. So it's not like, it's not like going down So it's not like, it's not like going down to the lot and picking one out and saying, that's the one I want. And two weeks later, you're driving.
Not quite as bad as getting a fire truck, but.
Not as bad as a fire truck.
We used to go down to the lot and pick them out and they fell apart within two years.
Right, right.
It was not, it was not a good call.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, oh yeah. How are we doing on fuel?
As far as usage, on the, on the, um.
Yeah, just.
So two of them are hybrids.
Right.
And they have, they have, we have recognized the savings with them, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, cause, yeah, cause you're, you've only spent half the budget.
Yeah.
Through.
Well, again, we've had vacancies, so that's, you know, that helps with that. But, but yes, the, the fuel bill, fuel costs are down.
I just have a question about the structure of the sheet. Is it filtered? Cause the math on the anticipated cost is not adding up. So like an example is fire and rescue, it says it's one point seven three million, but that's only five hundred ninety thousand.
I will say that Central Answer Planning gave us this.
Okay.
Um, I, some of the, some of the, um, it's an Excel spreadsheet. And, and s- some of the cells didn't, for whatever reason, they weren't working right. So, um, we tried to, tried to get it fixed. I'm not sure, I have, unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to really go through with a fine-tooth comb to.
I can tell you what the fire one is. They didn't, they're not showing the, uh, cap reserve that we spent on the fire truck.
Oh, okay.
That's probably, that's probably the difference in the math, because we spent, we put cash on it. Randy's looking at the subtotal of one point seven three million under anticipated costs. But if you see the two numbers above, it doesn't add up to that. So they're, they're missing, they're missing half the fire trucks.
Yeah.
Yep.
That'll do it.
What's the difference on the highway department?
That's a good question.
That's why I asked if it was like filtered and it was not shown. The math wasn't mathing.
Yeah, definitely, okay.
Was it projected operating cost in the department potentially? No?
Not on these. This is a state, this is a, this is a RSA-regulated.
Yes.
Function, not, not on the spreadsheet.
Right, right.
What does it, doesn't go in?
All right, well, I apologize, we've been kind of busy. Having a, had a chance to really go through this with a fine-tooth comb. So we will get the numbers, uh, corrected and, and send it out to you guys.
Was this, um, part of what you wanted their formulas for? Because you had issues seeing how, why the math wasn't mathing either?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
When you see where you land on, you know, when, when you see where we land for the budgets going forward, have a look at what they're proposing for the fire engine CRF, because there's, there's no way that's buying you a fire engine.
No, no, that's what we, that was one of the things we talked about was, and I think, you know, we wanted to talk about a little bit tonight was, what should we stop putting away on some of these, you know? Because the engine that we're buying now that costs eight hundred and fifty thousand in, today, it's.
Yeah, one, between one point two and one point three million with a five-year delivery. As it stands now.
And the contract has a clause in it that allows them to increase the cost of, of it. If this cost increases that they have no control over, uh, the manufacturer has no control.
So no price guarantee?
So there's no price guarantee, yeah.
The only sort of light at the end of the tunnel is there is a federal investigation that has started about price fixing. And what's happened is the apparatus companies have been bought by equity firms. So they've gone from, you know, several different manufacturers to choose from, to a handful. And it's just gotten very, very difficult. I mean, I, I think it's, it's been difficult enough to buy the fire engine that we haven't even seen. That's, that's been years in the making, so.
If, if it's truly gonna take five years when we order the next one, should we be buying it now?
Funny you should ask.
I don't think so yet, Kelly. The twenty fifteen, right, Bob?
Right, yeah.
Twenty fifteen, um, seems to be doing fine. But, but it's certainly something we have to think about. And that was why I think we're all in agreement that we need to look at the amount that we're, we're putting away. Because it's just.
Well, didn't Chief Kamash himself say, you know, don't put it, he had a plan for what year we should probably start.
Yeah.
Um, putting away for it. And at the moment, it's, we're listing it as starting to save for it next year. But I thought he, he was further out.
No, I don't, I don't believe so.
If you look at the capital reserve deposits, it looks like, yeah, it starts in twenty fifteen, six fifty thousand.
Twenty twenty-six.
Which isn't gonna be enough.
No.
That's probably not. Okay, we're gonna be, if you wanna, because we wanted to, we were thinking, you were thinking cash half, bond half.
Mm-hmm, yep, right.
Cause, I mean, the nice part about the bond is it's ten-year, right? You can still bond it for ten years.
Mm-hmm, that's, yeah, exactly what we're doing with the fire engine that's coming.
One more thing while we're on vehicles. The loader that's up at the transfer station. It needs a new center bearing, rear brakes, rear, a bunch of work. Uh, for about fifteen thousand dollars. John feels that that would be the way to go. And that would extend the life of it for at least another two years. So, um, I, I think, you know, and, and if you look at the CIP, it's planned out in, in twenty-seven, I think, or twenty-eight to look at.
Twenty-seven.
So.
Yeah, twenty-twenty-seven.
I'd fix it. We don't put that in the hours, like, it's not like it's working in construction. So it just, it just, it just loads salt trucks.
Yep, yep, so.
Yeah, I'd fix it. Didn't we do a center pivot bearing on it?
Yep.
Ten years ago?
Well, ten years ago, yes, yep.
You would remember things like that.
Well, that's a.
That's a big, yeah.
Cause we've had the argument about buying a new load, um.
Yeah.
Time and time again.
A lot of times.
I think that's about it on capital costs. Let's see. While the Budget Committee is here, uh, I got an email from the company that provides the town with fireworks. Fourth of July is on a Saturday this year. If we want fireworks on that weekend, Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, the cost will be twenty-five thousand dollars.
As opposed to like five?
As opposed to around ten thousand.
Ten.
If we do it on either the week before or the week after.
That sounds like a plan.
Half the town in July.
How was it last year? Ten thousand.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five, because it's on a Saturday. He, I mean, this guy's, he's pretty, he's pretty open with me and he said, I'm sorry. He said, the, if you do it on a Saturday on Fourth of July, he says, I am spread so thin that I have to charge to pay my people. So, um.
Why don't we post the time and date of Concord's fireworks displaying on our town website and save the money?
There you go.
Says, we have lots of places we could use that fifteen grand.
Yeah, that's, my reply was, my guess is that the Selectmen of the Budget Committee will opt for an off-weekend, if at all.
Maybe, maybe when the fourth is actually on the Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. We don't have the Canterbury fireworks.
Maybe not, maybe not.
We do it when it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Shouldn't that animate the country?
Right.
Yeah. I think, I mean, I mean, it's not like it's an environmentally benign activity in the town. And there's a lot of it up and down the valley, other opportunities. Feel, I don't, I don't feel compelled to have Canterbury fireworks. I think there's opportunities for.
Yeah, but are you saying no fireworks at all or just not fireworks on the fourth? Because when will the Recreation Committee be doing anything on the fourth?
So the Recreation Committee doesn't do it, it's the Fuckers?
Oh, Friends, okay, so whoever.
Uh, they would align with whatever.
Since you know both.
I do know both.
What, what will the, what will the Friends of Canterbury Center be doing?
They would align with whatever the town wants to do. So if you wanted to go the weekend before or after, we would let our best do that.
There are several towns around that don't have fireworks on the fourth. They may have an Old Home Day.
Yeah.
Um, and they'll have fireworks at the Old Home Day in August or something like that, but, so I.
I've been, I've been in the Grinchy no fireworks boat for a long time, sorry.
I'm the opposite. I like the fireworks. As somebody with kids, it's really nice to drive five minutes down there.
Yeah.
You're not trying to park at Memorial Field and elbow your way in two miles to go park and get out. It's, it's more family-friendly here. Do I like twenty-five thousand dollars? No. But I think a lot of people would push back if there was no fireworks in that timeframe.
You could go visit, go visit Chance, cause on the top of that hill on the right night, you can see six or seven fireworks.
Well, I can watch them off my back deck, the whole everywhere, yeah. No, I, I just think that in, in the, for the spirit of, it's the Fourth of July. You know, I think it would greatly affect the Friends of the Canterbury Center. There'd be less turnout. I mean, last year, we had tons of people that didn't even live in town. It was, it was really good for, I think, a lot, not just.
But you could still have a good event, just not on that day and fifteen thousand dollars is nothing to sneeze at. And a lot of people would complain about that.
I'm a big fan of doing things on non-stick weekends.
Yeah, I think that's fun.
I'd say, I'd say do it on the non-twenty-five thousand dollar day.
Yeah, let's do that. To be determined.
Yeah, okay.
Like, we're gonna get better vans for a cheaper cause?
Yeah.
Like, everything becomes more affordable.
Yeah, yeah.
On July twenty-first.
Yeah, yeah. It did read.
Probably be a drought, nobody would be allowed to send them up anyway.
Yeah.
Saint Swethens Day. Well, that was nice, they gave you a heads up, though.
Yeah, yeah.
But now.
I think that's more or less it, so we can get into the Ares report. So, um, we've had some updated, updates on the Ares report. Some of the numbers weren't exactly right. I talked with George Holt at Ares last week. There was a mistake on, on one of the spreadsheets. So, um, just as a, I prepared the summary, um, that you guys should all have.
I have, I have two copies of the summary and like.
So I, Kelly, are those the ones that you were emailed or picked up tonight?
Kelly, I did them.
Okay.
I accidentally gave you all the extras. So there's two here. It's the same as your, what was emailed, right?
No, no, the email one was.
Oh.
Free, uh.
Can I put it on the paper?
Pre-conversation?
Yes.
The one in the, the one in the tiny type is the one we're looking at?
Two, I'm so long enough, Bob, I'm scared of it.
Oh.
The, the table, if you're looking at the table one, cost auction analysis. The one that was printed tonight, if you look at option four and option six, they're the same. So that, that was a mistake on, on that. I don't know why those got printed out. So there's, there's really only seven options. And I'll run down through just a summary of, of the options. We can do nothing. We can purchase a new Packer. Uh, the cost of a new Packer, um, he lists four hundred and five thousand. I had looked online at Equipment Trader and found some, what, the size that we were looking at, uh, around two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I mean, two hundred and fifteen thousand, I'm sorry. A used one.
This is still not right.
A used one in two thousand twenty-one, uh, two thousand twenty-one used, I found, in good condition, was a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. So if we bought new Packer trucks, a new Packer truck or a used Packer truck, those are what, what the rate is today.
Okay.
Option two, install, install a standalone compactor for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And we would need to build a canopy and a shelter for the operator.
So four eighteen is incorrect, correct? Well, when we got emailed, it says four eighteen.
The one, the one I emailed you guys is wrong.
Okay, good.
The one, this is the correct one tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Install a rear feed compactor where the Packer truck is currently parked. Three hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred, because you would need to raise the floor, um, and do some concrete work there. Option four was subcontract, subcontract all operations. At the current transfer station, there were no bids on that.
Never have been.
Uh, we did talk to Casella. I think when I first started in two thousand and fourteen, and it was twice as much as what we pay now. So, or what we were paying at the time.
So the, the documentation that was emailed said they only went to Casella and Wim. How come they didn't do like a shaver that already services Canterbury?
I, we hired Ares to, to do this and this is what, this is who they contacted. I, I don't know.
They went for the big boys?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause they need to staff it. And there are very few companies that will operate the municipal transfer station, you know, that's not the size of Concord's or bigger. So I don't know why they wouldn't talk, if there's a local player, that'd be great. But that was never a, a cost-effective option, just because we're, we're so small.
Uh, option five was purchase new property and construct a new transfer station, which, uh, carries a price tag of one point three million dollars. Option six is curbside pickup of household trash and rec- and recyclables. And that's two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. That is the cost of the pickup. There's still the cost of, of disposal. And that's a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year, a hundred and eight, seven hundred.
I'm sorry, that was the one that I had thought of shaver, um, not the one to, to pay people to do it.
Yeah.
That one, then just cross that off. I mean, we have nine hundred and ninety houses and forty-seven square miles of town over eighty miles of road. Can you imagine what the town might look like if people put plastic bags of garbage down at the road and let all the critters feast? And then honestly, by the time you drive all the way to the bottom of most of our driveways, you might as well just keep driving.
Uh, same thing, option seven, curbside pickup of waste only, is a hundred and ninety-five thousand. And then recyclables would go to the current transfer station, which is another hundred thousand. So the total is two ninety-five. Again, you'd still have to add the cost of disposal on that.
I like option one.
I like option zero.
So just considerations, the current Packer is twenty-six years old. Year-to-date repair cost is almost ten thousand dollars. Rear brakes and broken springs, check engine light, so on and so forth. If we did go with a compactor, uh, we would have to either contract with someone to take the compactor containers, and transport them to a, a waste facility. Or if we bought one, uh, a new one is two hundred and twenty-five thousand and a used, I found one of, it was a two thousand twenty for a hundred and forty-five thousand.
You mean a roll-off truck?
Yeah, a roll-off truck, yeah, yeah.
I would say that as long as we continue to tip the trash six miles away, it makes absolutely no sense to put it in a compactor. That, that, that transporting it there in the Packer truck, which probably puts twenty-four miles a week on the truck. I mean, keep fixing it. And if I remember correctly, Ken, the, uh, contract with Wheelbrader gives a two-year notice if they're gonna discontinue operations. So you have time to figure out a compactor if they give you notice that they're gonna discontinue. Cause the roll-off truck and the compactor make a lot of sense if we have to haul our trash at the watchout. You know, or Bethlehem, absolutely. Cause you couldn't do that in a little bitty pack. But I would, I would keep fixing the pack. And I would look at the expense of running the Packer over the years, right? Cause, okay, it needed brakes this time around, but it's not like we're going through a set of brakes every year. Those brakes have probably been in there for fifteen years. And, you know, municipal pack trucks, the ones that, you know, ones that you see run through the cities and stuff, lots of miles, a fair amount of driver, creature comforts and other things that you really don't need to drive to Pinnacle. And, you know, municipal packer trucks, the ones that, you know, ones that you see run through the cities and stuff, lots of miles, a fair amount of driver, creature comforts and other things that you really don't need to drive to panic over. I think I like I like the do-nothing option at the moment, except fix the equipment and keep going.
Well, there's more to do than just do nothing. If, you know, again, there's rearranging things to better make use of the space. There's the issue of the salt shed, there's the issue of storage, there's an issue for something basic like a bathroom for our workers.
Yeah, these are.
Uh, this is the other.
This is this is some capital outlays. There are some, uh, options or some some considerations in the in the report that talk about, uh, storage of of recyclables. And, um, he said, there is space to put a, uh, well up there and a septic system. If we wanted to put a bathroom and and water up there, um, there is there is space, so.
Would it be safe to drink from?
Pardon?
Would it be safe to drink from?
Upstream of the landfill.
So, what they're what they're looking at is the the well would be, um, in the package. Um, in this, uh, there's a couple of diagrams in here that show current and then potential locations of of, uh, either new buildings, additions, um, storage areas, a water well, and a septic. Those are part of the new one.
The salt shed conversation isn't really a transfer or solid waste function, that's a highway department function, and that salt shed has been looking a little thin for a while. But you guys pretty much determined that you couldn't move the salt shed to the municipal complex unless we acquired some additional land?
That was, the only place you could put it would be, I guess, there's two locations that you could put it. They're both right out front. And about, at least from from Ares' perspective, was, does the town want a salt shed right out in front in the historic district?
No.
And and the answer is probably no. And the only other option would be buy some more property behind it and put the salt shed out there.
But there was room, if they were creative about it, to to fit it in the space that we have without buying additions on it.
Yeah, and that was, they they said that there is space on the present site that you could move the salt shed.
On the transfer station.
On the transfer station site, yeah, that you could build a new one somewhere else. And and, um, they did recommend, instead of using the salt shed for storage of of recyclables, that, um, the cost of containers, we have one container up there, and maybe it's time to look at, uh, we have, uh, four or five old trailer bodies up there. And maybe it's time to look at replacing those with new containers and using them, uh, instead of the trailer bodies and and stuff for for recyclables, storage recyclables.
I mean, the rest, the rest of the report has a lot more information about how they might possibly use this space, so. And if there isn't, you know, again, if we don't decide to go with a new Packer and they're not going to build the pad and have that be a whole separate thing, you know, there's that space too. But I think that's a that's a much larger discussion.
I think the in in my mind, the purpose of trying to flush this out a little bit tonight was, kind of goes along with the CIP. If if the intent is to to purchase a compactor in the future and and do that, then maybe it's time to establish a cap reserve account. Or we have a cap reserve account for, um, transfer station improvements, and should we start putting more money into that to fund a a larger project somewhere down the road? And and do we look at starting a cap reserve fund for a new Packer truck? I think these are some of the questions that that we were looking at.
It never hurts to put something away, you're gonna have to look at how it fits in the context of the other expenditures. We're we're still picking up a nice benefit on the tax rate on the utility.
We haven't gotten any, uh, those of the vapor jets, so.
Uh, they haven't totally equal one.
Yes.
So, uh, you may, when you set the tax rate, wanna put a small overlay on, but, um, but and so if it's not, it should be broadly known among this group, right, that all of those wonderful new power lines that have gone up are going to add a significant amount to the assessed value of the town. And I forgot what Mandy's estimate was, but it was worth a couple bucks, I thought.
It was, yeah.
Just under seven hundred, I think.
Yeah.
So, when are we rebalancing?
Next year.
Next year, yeah.
Yeah, so her, um, her review, um, the valuation, the two thousand twenty-four valuation for Eversource was six million four fifty-six, and the twenty-five valuation is thirty-five billion three hundred and fourteen thousand. So, an increase of twenty-eight million dollars. It it increases the total town valuation by about thirty-two thou- uh, thirty-two million. If if everything is, everything is the same, the the tax rate, uh, could be at right around twenty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents with with municipal, county, local, state. So, um, that's that's what the, um, impact is in that.
I wouldn't count it as gains.
Yeah, that's what we're saying, too. We did hire, uh, uh, an assessor for this utility revow, and if there's any.
Yeah, that was money well spent.
Abandon requests, then then he would he would be with us.
Go defend it.
Thanks, yeah, yeah. But most, well, all of that information came directly from Eversource. So, basically, it was putting the numbers together, more or less. So, it's all their all their figures, so I'm not sure how they could argue it.
You'll just pay it in your delivery. Said you'll just pay it in your delivery charges.
So, regarding. So, can I ask a question? So, this is Bob. Uh, what would happen if we just, uh, kept the compactor, the way the truck that we have, and, uh, did something for providing a bathroom, water, and a place for the employees to be warm? And just settle with that, yeah, because we should think about the employees and what they don't have right now. And could we just get along with taking care of them and keeping the the truck, nursing that along?
But that was one of their options.
Well, that is, that is obviously an option, um, again.
Does it make any sense?
We have recommendations of where we could put a well and a septic up there, so, then, you know, certainly be an associated cost, but but, uh, it can be done.
Well, by what you were asking about, uh, you know, putting money aside for a compactor if we're going to do that, but if so, say we go with that route, where do we do we have to establish a CIP, not a CIP, a capital reserve account for future renovations, or is that already existing?
We do have one for improvements.
Yeah. That's the one that we've got. You know the number better than I. So, we should start funding that, if nothing else.
We'll give you what we have in the past.
Bathroom is pretty low hanging fruit. I mean, come on.
I was gonna say, if you're putting in a well and septic.
Let me ask you this, are we asking for the bathroom, or are the guys who work there asking for it?
No, they are not. I think it's a pretty low, um, bar to give our employees.
They have those really nice portable, like, I kid you not, portable.
No, I know, you can get, you can get a.
Situations, you know, you walk inside and then you go up step, it's inside, it has water tank, it runs water, it's just a nice bathroom, it doesn't have, we don't need to do a well and a septic for it.
Absolutely. We don't, but a bathroom facility, that's up to.
You could get a better one.
Yeah.
You run like a travel.
What whatever that takes.
We have a transfer station upgrade capital reserve, and it's seven thousand dollars.
Yeah. That's not gonna do it.
Not gonna do it, but it's, uh.
But if you wanted to put some more money aside, you could use that.
You might think of it in two stages, because there's nothing that says you couldn't put in a tight tank. Because you're simply, if you're not gonna, it's gonna take a long time to fill a fifteen-hundred-gallon septic tank with water, based on three guys doing part-time work, and no one's doing any laundry, no one's washing dishes.
Whatever it takes.
So, the cost would be a well and and a facility.
Did you just say three guys? It'd not be guys.
Okay.
Three people.
Three people, three people, right now, it's three.
Guys in the general sense, like, use guys.
Three people.
Yeah.
But three people, but three people aren't living there, right? It's not, you know, the water needs it, it'd take a long time to fill a tight tank.
A casual member of the public might wanna use it, too.
Yeah.
If it was emergency.
Yeah, still, it's a tiny fraction of what a household would experience.
Well, absolutely.
And so if we say a bathroom is important, then whatever it costs to do it reasonably and make it, uh, you know, come on.
I think you give them, I think I think you give them a nice portage on, and you call it a day, that would be me. I don't think a bathroom's important, it hasn't been important for forty, fifty years.
Sorry, Kelly, interrupted.
One of the things that we that I did investigate is, they have office trailers with, um, bathrooms with water supply and a holding tank.
Yep.
You know, I I I couldn't get prices on those, but they do have those. I can't imagine they're too much money. I mean, in the grand scheme of things.
They, so those of us who do construction know that, uh, that has been another private equity consolidation, is the the delivery and the rental of those types of construction trailers, and so where there used to be like seven or eight companies across the country that did it, now there's two.
Yeah.
I just wanted to.
So, price is probably higher than.
I wanted to just make sure I understand this correctly, that the last, um, that last option of potentially building a new building that would be office space and bathroom, um, and recycling, storage, so that the salt shed can remain a salt shed as it is, that is not in any way reflected in any of these price options, right?
Correct. Where do we put the ballroom?
Hey, you know, it's been a long time since we had Dance at the Dump.
I was just looking at those pictures the other day.
We could revive Dance at the Dump.
No, thank you.
That was a fundraiser.
I mean, we did it, we made, we did it as a fundraiser before, and we made tens of dollars.
Yes, anyway.
Wouldn't it be the cheapest way is just get another, just fix the truck and limp along?
Always the cheapest way, Bob.
That's my vote, Bob.
Well, if Bob thinks that, I think that, because we're both Bobs.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, the Bobs twins. Don't put that in the record.
Too much.
It's too late, Bob.
But you used to spend on the house, spend on an office trailer and that, well, uh, you can make a little life as well.
So, I did have, uh, prices for those a while back, but can I find it now? No.
Yeah, is there anything in the operating budget lines that, um, you want us to think about or prep us for? I guess we're gonna come back.
The only thing, the only thing in the operating budget that I know of for sure is the police department feels that they are going to, um, the only increase that they're looking at is wages. You're looking at improvement in retention, so they're looking at a potential, uh, step system for wages to more or less guarantee some kind of wage increase or, you know, when you come on board, you know where you're gonna be in five years. Whether there's a step increase, and then obviously there'd be potential for COLAs or something like that, but that's, that was what they said. Uh, the library has come in with, uh, their budget, uh, with some significant wage increases. Uh, however, they're offsetting it with money from their trustees, so, uh, we'll be sending that out soon.
How does that work if the trustees are supplementing wages? What happens if in like a future year, they don't do that? Is the town on the hook to pay those wages?
They would, I would think there'd need to be some kind of guarantee of how often they would wanna do that.
The the town has no, uh, I I guess, no, at the time, the town would say, well, this is what we're funding for tax dollars, and just because you're making thirty dollars an hour today, tomorrow you may be making fifteen dollars, because those trustees decided not to fund wages. I mean, that's the potential.
Could they treat it as like a one-time bonus, so that we don't have to actually increase their wages? Sorry?
I I'm not completely sure. The one thing that we learned with bonuses is there are tax implications, so that's, I think that would have to be, um, determined. I think the selectmen and you guys, when you get the budget, are are gonna have to look at it and make a decision on on how to proceed.
I mean, it's a bottom-line budget, the town doesn't control how it gets spent, we just control the amount of money that the library gets, and then it's up to the library trustees. So, the control that the town has is to say, here's your budget, do what you want with it. If you wanna spend more on wages and less on something else, that's up to them, but I think, yeah, my concern maybe align perhaps with what your comment was, Randy, is, you know, large wage increases to me, obviously elevate the floor for all wages and all future wage increases, so if you have a big jump, um, you really have to look at it. And then you have to look at how many employees the library has, how many do they need? And, you know, we fund our library really, really well compared to most towns our size, and we have a very nice library. And, uh, it gets the support of the townspeople, like, you know, we we frequently have this discussion with the library trustees and the director, and they usually come back reasonably.
I remember years ago, well, I don't even know if you're on the board, Brusella, Frank, and Ivan Mike, that the library took care of all their own bills, their home employees, their payroll and everything. I wouldn't be opposed to going back to that. Do you remember that?
I remember when we used to do it, and I remember when we changed it, because the the accountancy became a real challenge, and the accountability. And using the town's payroll system, because it doesn't cost the town a lot of money to process, but it does mean that we have a better accuracy reporting. Because I I don't know that you save any money like that.
I think you're responsible for all of that. They'd be responsible for all of that.
They would, but.
But I think it wouldn't be as, I think, as far as the wages, it wouldn't be as ill-willed, where the library is getting seven percent, and these guys might get three.
Yeah, you still can't, I don't see how having them pay their own bills makes a difference, because you can just establish, the budget is X, you can make it flat to last year, here's the budget. You, library trustees, can spend it as you see fit, because they.
Jan, are you suggesting the library actually pay all their own wages, too, like, out of the trust?
They, um, no, they'd have a budget that the town would give them, like, quarterly.
Oh, I see. Okay, here's your money and you do it.
Here's your money. Do your own payroll taxes, your own retirement, your own everything.
I do remember that. They also remember that we had one and a half libraries, please.
Yeah, it seems like that would create a second, um, I'm gonna see your point, but also that there's administrative costs for doing all that, doing it properly, and.
But there is for the town, too, that they're not paying for, and the town's paying.
Right, but setting up two parallel systems is always more expensive than having one system doing everything. So, on a net basis, like, in terms of what people in the town end up paying for. If if what Bob is saying is accurate, that the town decides how much we're gonna allocate to the library, and then the librarians, library trustees can decide how to spread that across their budget, along with what they can allocate, it doesn't make a financial difference to the taxpayer.
No, but I just think it it's better on the employees not to see somebody getting a six percent raise and a little cheap rule and getting free, uh.
Well, that's a different question. I don't know. I mean, I don't remember those days. It would have to be transparent, right? The library is still a public entity using public funds, so they'd have to publish how they're spending their money, okay?
I don't know, they're they're a whole different animal, I don't.
Well, I know, but there, there aren't very many parts of the government, even independently, that just don't get to report, right? They would.
We may not have a say in how they spend it, but we know what it is.
When I'm saying how it's done is when we wanna know how they do it.
Yeah.
They might have to do a separate report and show their budget and their actions and.
I don't know how that would work, but I bet, I'll bet that's a, yeah, I don't know.
I don't know, I just think that their, their wages are out of control compared to everybody else's wages and I don't think it's fair.
Do we have a comparison of like wages and historical raises for like the past couple of years by department?
Yeah, and, and, and Rachel has a very clear comparison of other libraries, ourselfs and towns.
Well, no, I meant like within the town, so like Highway, Lee's, Spire, like all those people, so let's say, you know, some departments are doing like.
We have, we have, we have wage scales dating back several years. We've, we've done comparisons of.
I meant more like, you know, in 2025, library was this percent, Highway was this percent, in 2024, library was this percent.
Yep. We, and we can, sure, we can do that. I've hesitated to try and single out departments that way, but, but we can certainly do that.
Well, to this lady's point, like if everyone else is coming in really low and some departments are coming in higher, like that's not good for.
Yeah, though, I think, I think the last few years, the library has done some spot increases for particular employees. They've tried, I think they've tried to stay close to what the other town employees are getting, but there have been some, some fairly significant spot increases in places. I know the increase, they, they increased their hours for some of their staff so they could receive benefits, but so have other departments, so. One thing that we do have, that we did get, the library sent us a comparison with all the libraries in the state, or it's, it's a, it's an Excel spreadsheet that shows what the operating expenses are, what directors are paid, how many hours they work, employees, things like that. And it's a, it's a wage survey basically for all the libraries in the state, the ones that reported.
How does, how does Canada compare to like Dunbar?
I would, I, I, I put together, I started to put together a comparison using the towns that we have historically used in our wage comparisons. I haven't quite finished it yet. So, once that gets done, trying to get all this stuff ready for the first of December, so you guys can have all of that. So, getting, getting all that information together, we'll send it out to you guys.
It's hard though to, to compare if, you know, like the library wages versus the police force or something, if percentage wise, if they've got a trust that's willing to kick in and give them the, the money that they think that their employees deserve. So that's, that's a, you know, we don't have that option. So that's another thing to look at, but I, you know, to Randy's point, I'd wanna know how long the trustees would wanna kick in.
I spoke to Rachel about it and she said the trustees would cover the raise indefinitely. Now, I don't know how long you can manage that.
Yeah, well, I want that in writing and indefinitely is a long time.
Don't you?
I, I know it is, but it depends on how they have the trust invested.
But it also doesn't matter if we only say we're going to fund X amount, correct?
But no one wants to like take money away in future years, that.
Well, that would be on the trustees, not on us.
That was hard to explain to the rest, to people in town.
So the trust funds are completely separate from town funds, right?
Yes, it is. Yes.
So it's operated on its own entity, everything is separate, so shouldn't we try and keep separate?
So if, if you look at the town report, there's, the library's budget is separated into two sections. One is trust funds and one is tax dollars.
They both appear in the report because it's transparency, right? We have to disclose.
Though the trust is not listed in the report.
But the trust, the trust is, it's listed in the town report as an expense, but then it's a revenue offset.
Is it? No, but I mean, what's in the trust is not.
Oh.
Oh, I, we don't have that.
No, but other towns do.
I don't know. I don't know. I think you would have to ask.
So the trustees or the trust funds do not invest the library trust. The library trusts invest that separately.
That's a separate.
They're not subject to the same constraint as the municipal funds, so their return on their investment has historically been higher than the public investment pool. So they've been able to sustain a principal balance over the years with the, but we don't have, we're not, we the town don't have access to that. Information we do when we report budgets and expenditures, line item out what they're spending.
I'm just curious why it's never the amount of the trust where other trusts are.
But it is a revenue offset, so, meaning when, when we put it in the budget, you know, when we're voting in appropriation on the bottom line for that and we are, you know, trusting, the trustees to be trusted and give us the money, which they would of course. You know, another thing you, you know, I think from an employee parity, there's always a component of parity and making sure that, you know, you try to treat all the people the same and then there's the market demand component, right, for what skill level, what, what is the skill set and who does it? So, police officers and transfer station employees, you know, there's a different skill set, there's a different market price, so there's a component of that. It's also about eight percent of the total town budget is the library including the trust fund, so, you know, it's not over.
No.
But let's not, we're not gonna solve the tax problem on that, but we do have to have a reasonable approach. And I think last year you guys asked the library trustees to have a hard look at what they were spending and, you know, try to align their wage structure with what the town was doing and I think they largely did, yeah.
They didn't, they didn't change their wages though, they were, they went through their budget and, you know, cut things. And found, you know, whatever.
They, they brought it, they brought their budget into, linked to line.
Yes, yes, but it wasn't on the back of the wages.
Yeah, yeah, they, up to them, but, you know, they did, but they did bring their budget kinda in line with the, the rest of the town's increase or the desire for the budget to be as flat as possible.
So we just need to encourage a lot of residents to create trust funds for their favorite town department, the art trust fund, the police department trust fund. Um, the library did the low of the COLA four percent increases last year.
What's COLA this year, two point eight?
Two point nine.
Two point nine?
Four percent.
They're the rates.
Yeah, the, the CPI is running around three point four, three point five percent. So, I think, you know, looking at that, we typically, we typically, you know, wages align with the CPI, the wage increases. We'll have the.
Say it was three point four?
Yeah, and, and we'll have the final, I think that was as of September. They're about a month or so behind on, on their reporting, so hopefully in December I'll have the latest on that and have some ideas on, on wages.
And the police officer, you said we've had an open position for a year and then I think I keep seeing highway department open positions, so those must be very in demand.
So that, speaking of wages, I know that you said Chief Crady is speaking, you know, doing a, a wage package so to help in get new officers and to retain officers. Do we expect the same from the highway department? To try and, I mean, we offered the, you know, the, the CDL licensing program, but, you know, both our young men who have done that are, that hasn't necessarily helped retain people, so is a wage increase coming, going to come down or be offered, considered I should say?
So I, I will do a wage survey with surrounding towns. We typically look at Andover, Tychester, Canterbury, Dunbar, and New Hampton and Webster. Those are the towns that I've looked at in the past. Their population, their operating budget and their median income is similar to what Canterbury is. We're never gonna be able to do apples to apples, but, but it'll, it'll be close, so I think, you know, that's, that's what I've been, those are the towns I've been working with the past five or six years and I, you know, we may drop a town, we may pick up a different town, I, I try and look at the latest demographics and, and try and keep it as close to Canterbury as possible.
Ken, could you humor me and just give me those towns again?
Andover?
Yep.
Tychester?
Yep.
Canterbury?
Yep.
Dunbar?
Yep.
New Hampton?
New Hampton.
And Webster.
Thank you.
Cal, that, the packet you sent us all last week, that 2026 budget, that, that super Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Alright, so everybody got that?
Uh, yes, and that does have wages by person, right?
So my question is then, coming, when you look at the propos, what, I don't even know which one it's under, real quick, let me zoom back out. I think it's under the tax rate collector tab.
Yeah.
The, the proposed tax rate for next year is higher than what we said earlier. On this one, it says twenty-four, twenty-five, or I think Ken said twenty-two-ish.
Sorry, can you, can you say that again? On which, which tab? The.
The tax rate calculator?
Tax rate calculator.
Tax rate calculator, yeah.
On that spreadsheet, I think, and I just wanna make sure I'm reading it right. It's saying the proposed tax rate for 2025, effective fall and spring is twenty-four, twenty-five. Is that accurate or is that not including?
No, that's, that's not including county or town, those ones aren't finalized.
Okay.
Those have the yellow on them.
Yeah.
Cause I was trying to figure that out, how it was just, the number was two dollars different and I didn't know if that's gonna put a crunch on decisions down the road or if that's just a completely loose number right now.
That's a completely loose number.
Okay.
We should have a tax rate, hopefully in the next three weeks, two to three weeks.
Couple weeks, okay.
And you guys vet with the school district, right? Any, any surprises?
Yeah.
They have a big buyout, don't they, on the healthcare?
Yeah, certainly I wouldn't call that a surprise.
Yeah, the healthcare.
No, it's, we've known about it, but.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that was.
It was unbudgeted though.
Correct, yeah, that's.
They are looking at capital.
If I could, if I could.
What about?
If I could, I, I, I might be testing your patience, but when I was looking at this whole package regarding the analysis by Aries, it was assumed that there was going to be a compactor options versus keeping just the, the compactor truck. And I kinda thought, well gee, I guess if I were looking at the options, I'd like option two if we were gonna go with the compactor route. But if we go back to the discussion that we've had tonight, it seems like maybe saving, just keeping the, the truck that we have. However, there's the salt issue, there's the issue of flow of traffic through the, the station and how things are handled relative to recyclables and everything. And I wonder, first of all, what did the dump committee recommend? And I thought that we were going to have a meeting of people to, a working committee for dump things. I have it on my calendar as something that was going to happen that would review what, what has been, what would have been developed. So, is there a review by the dump committee, other recommendations? Is there a working committee for the dump? Is it just up to this group and the selectmen? How is this working?
So Bob, there is no more solid waste committee, I think that's what you're referring.
Yeah, I mean, yes, that's okay.
Yeah, so, so yes, we, you know, one of the reasons why we wanted to meet with the budget committee early was to, well, thinking about the transfer station.
Right. Okay, so, but that, this is not the end then? I imagine you're going to go on to another set of steps?
Correct, so we, as, as you mentioned, we've got many things to look at.
Yeah.
So, so tonight really was just kind of a, you know, a chance to, to look at these options together and discuss them. So we haven't had a discussion really since we got the report outside of the select board.
Will there be a committee? Is my calendar incorrect? A committee for discussing the dump? Or is, is this or the selectmen the committee?
When do you have it on your calendar Bob?
Uh, for seven PM for November fifth. At our last meeting, the budget committee, that's what I put down as when we would have to get together to cut, begin to talk about this.
No, I'm, I'm not aware of any meeting.
I think that's.
Well, you know what, at the nursing home, they sometimes think I hallucinate, so.
You're not, you're not hallucinating Bob.
I just think you're ahead of schedule Bob, I think that was tonight's meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Behind schedule.
Yeah, exactly.
So I would think yes to answer your question Bob. It all needs to be looked at again and picked through. If you see the budget committee and everybody seems to be lending to, leaning towards the least expensive option, see how you can get for that. And there are other questions that were included in that report that isn't part of this very short summary, so.
Right, but it is all connected.
That will need to be looked at, yes.
Yeah, okay, well, it's been a good first discussion.
What else? That's all I have for Aries and.
Wages and healthcare. When did you say that they might sit there? When will we know more price actual numbers?
Ten.
The ten.
So next Monday?
And we're hoping to get numbers from CGI.
Okay.
Anything else from the budget committee?
Or the peanut gallery.
Um, so we'll see you all December first? First?
Oh yeah, let's see.
Five thirty Cal.
I do see, thank you for pointing out the wage scales so I can calculate my own percentages, so you do not need to get that for me.
And you'll be receiving stuff from us that we promised you tonight, so.
Yes.
Yep.
And Randy, I can send you the, the massive spreadsheets that I made in the past couple of years, so you can look at it.
I think I need to.
So budget committee is December first? Again?
Five thirty again?
December first is.
Yeah, five thirty Cal, yes, or Cal, yes.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, it's not gonna be as easy as you.
Well, it can't be as bad as last year, but I should probably never say that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yes it can.
Just remember, no one wants to select because first amperes, yeah.
Thank you Bob.
You all have a wonderful evening.
Yeah, now that you're not in town hall anymore, what the heck?
At least we're still meeting, right?
We are, right now maybe?
Yes, okay. Just one second.
Call me tonight, call me tomorrow, you can call me every.
I will, I will call you again after.
Will you be, yes, will you be ready?
I may not be.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you Kelly.
Thanks Kelly.
Kelly, did you get that email that I sent you?
Give me a slightly bigger.
Sorry.
A slightly bigger, slightly bigger clue.
The, the release?
Uh, I saw that it was there and I didn't read it.
Okay, could, could you check on it when you get a chance?
Okay. Yes.
Thank you.
Alright.
Any questions, just let me know.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was really mean, I could say you could sit right down and check it right there.
Alright, what, what do I do next? Uh, we have, um, high school six three nine. Yep. That was, is it in the paperwork?
That was, uh, the example letter that they sent.
Yes.
Um, that.
Do we have this in the stuff we already have, or?
No, there's only one.
Okay.
I mean, it's, they not knew this was. Yeah.
Cryptocurrency. This is relative to, uh, this was sent to us by the, um, conservation commission.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Relative to, they call it cryptocurrency, the data mining centers, basically large data centers that, um, that are not eco-friendly.
Okay. Well, and they're huge, energies suck, aren't they?
Again, they're not eco-friendly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, not energy friendly, yeah.
But I think the planning board has had this on their, uh, has done some discussions that I recall. Yes, yes.
It was on the agenda for last meeting, but it wasn't, they didn't get to it.
Yeah. It got blocked because of.
So tomorrow night, they might get to it?
Yeah, that's it.
So what was the other, is this the same letter you sent to Kelly where, uh, no, that Kelly sent to us?
Kelly sent this to, conservation commission sent it to the selectmen and to the planning board.
Does that, she said, I just wanna see if this is the same.
Asking you guys. Asking. Nope, not that, that area, no. Asking if, if you guys would mind signing on to a letter to the state reps, uh, opposing, um, the construction of these. Yeah.
Right, okay.
I'm certainly in favor of a letter and of signing it.
But there was also, it's the other thing I was thinking of. Sorry, I could be slightly brain dead, um.
Are, are you thinking of the other house bill that?
Yes, the other house bill that, that the conservation commission just weighed in on, that said absolutely, uh, the, um,
Blockchain dispute, don't get. I don't get the crypto.
Blockchain is the technology used to create crypto? That helps?
So if you.
I don't even, I'm not even gonna get into it.
You don't need to understand.
I can check my email, okay?
You don't need to understand.
It, like I say, basically, it's basically, uh, they're looking at large buildings with, that are housing, supercomputers that use a lot of energy.
A lot.
Water for cooling. Water for cooling, uh, electricity, things like that, that, that are, again, not eco-friendly is, is a probably a, a general way of talking about it.
So this would probably fall in line with the planning board's, uh,
zoning.
Uh, da- uh, data centers.
Correct. Correct, data centers, that's it.
The other, the other one that uses a lot of energy is really big.
Cause that's, yeah.
Same, it's essentially the same thing.
Yep.
The same thing.
So is this the same one that, so this is, I found the thing from Kelly that the bill prohibits the state and towns from establishing any future guardrails for noise, water, and energy? Is that this? Oh, yeah, then, not.
Okay.
I, I agree with the, it's, it sounded different than what I'm reading here, so.
We have a, we can draft a letter
Yeah.
for you guys to sign at the next meeting. Okay. And we'll send it to the state reps. I think that's all in agreement?
Yep.
Yes.
We're all agreed. Okay.
Excuse me.
Talked about the operations plan, we've talked about the streetlights. I think I briefly touched on the highway department and transfer station vacancies. Uh, the highway department, uh, is, is, John will be the only employee as of Thursday. I did have an interview today, it was, uh, hopefully we can onboard this person if things work out. Um, we did get a letter of resignation from, uh, Mr. Romero up at the transfer station. He'll be done the end of the year. Which he, he had told us. He had more or less said that, but we did finally get a, a letter. So that would leave us with just the transfer station manager. Yeah. So we are advertising, I don't know what else to do.
Um, what should be our, uh, staff at the highway department? Is three enough?
Road agent and three full-time employees.
Yeah. Three.
Staff of four.
Wow, okay.
And then we have five plot routes, so we bring on a seasonal person in the winter of the fall.
So with the dump, how, how many are they supposed to have?
Minimum of two. We, we, full staff is three.
And we haven't been full staff in sustained full staff?
We were temporarily. Well, we had, we had temporary help, well, we had one employee up there, um, that was, uh, helping out, you know, throughout the summer and part of the fall.
Now, is there an age requirement to work there? Eighteen or because of the equipment?
So, our property liability carrier, Primex, uh, does allow for people under eighteen to work for the town. However, they have quite a few suggestions on what they can do and what they can't do, uh, for liability issues, um.
So how helpful does that make them if they?
Well, I, I mean, I think, I think they suggest hiring over eighteen, but there are, uh, exceptions. Like we were hiring a seasonal person to mow, and they were under the age of eighteen, um, so which is okay. Well, I'm not sure handling the equipment that they handle up at the transfer station. Primex might say that's probably not a good idea.
Cause I'm just curious to, obviously with the Ares report and the future of the dump and the issues we've had with staffing, pretty much the last four to five years overall, would that have any impact in how we think long-term about the dump situation? Does that make it a more viable option to look into trash pickup if we can't staff?
I think everything's on the table.
Well, it seems, I mean, there's, I think there's a lot of creative ways we can start thinking about it, like, I mean, David works how many days for us, and now he's, you know, moonlighting as it were over Deerfield. Are there any number of people that we could, can we reach Dunbar, Andover, Tychester, you know, people that are similar in size to us? Can, are there dumps open different day? I mean, Saturday's pretty common. But is there a way that we can share staff so that, you know, somebody can, it's attractive for somebody to be working for two towns instead of just?
It's just a long way to commute for, what is it, twenty, twenty-two bucks an hour, something like that, I think.
Well, for, for, from Webster, yeah, but from Tychester? People drive to Boston every day for, I mean, yes, they drive for big jobs, but you know what I mean? I mean, is there a way that we can creatively share people, like we share, you know, equipment to?
I don't know, I just, in the back of my mind, I'm just seeing how hard it is to retain and, and, I mean, police are having a hard time, we're having a hard time with the highway. And now that we've got the, you know, the transfer station, does that head, does that weigh in a factor of, you know, I think Randy brought it up, do we contact a shaver? Maybe we can get some relief by having, you know, I, I don't know, I just think that we're gonna have to start getting a little bit more creative because it's very apparent, it is extremely difficult to hire anybody, any position right now, and I would hate to put that all on David. Hey David, you gotta be here three days a week, you gotta run the recycling, the compact, like, that's a lot for one person.
He's, and he's, he's, I think he's doing.
But, but now we can't pull from highway department because it's only John, so it's not like we can pull some temporary relief from them either, like we used to do.
I think we're gonna have to get creative across the board.
Or we're gonna have to start working at the dump with them.
Yeah, or, well, you know.
I mean, there's gotta be something because you're coming up on busy season. This is the holidays, there's a lot more trash, a lot more people, I mean, it's.
Well, we got two until the end of the year, but I think you're right. But, you know, and again, what, what is the factor? Is it just wages? Because it, that doesn't necessarily seem to be it. But, but, you know, how hard is everybody having to find people and what are they doing? And I can't see having, you know, trash pickup in town is just, you know, you're gonna have little old ladies down the end of a long driveway, gotta haul it to the.
Oh, look at me, I live on a class six road, I don't wanna drive my bins a quarter mile up.
I know, so, you know, anyway, I think.
What's the resolu-, I mean, we're gonna have to, I think, get a little bit more creative than just putting wanted ads out and hoping that something catches. You know, and I'd rather think that's gonna have a big impact on how we view the Ares summary and what our long-term investments there should be. You know, I, I'm not saying let's go build a new dump somewhere, but maybe that trash pickup option or a so- something becomes.
Well, you know, the, what, what did they not even bid on because we're too small?
Them running it.
Yeah.
But, but they bid on pickup and it was actually pretty comparable operating costs. If you take, if you take pickup and you run it against wages, disposal, and everything else, you're, you're almost in the ballpark. So it's, uh, I don't wanna put anybody out of a job, but if we can't, we're having an issue hiring, maybe that's something we have to long, long and hard think about, not necessarily this year, but maybe we work towards that in a five-year plan.
Well, it certainly doesn't, um, encourage to build a whole new station if you can't staff it, at least.
No, it's, but it's.
That's, that's one factor, one of several.
It's just how do you solve that issue when there's constant revolving doors of, of labor? And it's not just the transfer station, it's not just the highway, and it's not just Canterbury.
No.
You know?
Um, the town of Allentown last year, year ago, had their own municipal, uh, pickup. Well, they contracted with, with a company. That contract, company, the company was gonna increase prices significantly, and the town decided that they could not afford that. So they stopped, they did not contract that company, they did not contract with anybody. They closed their transfer station, and they sent letters out to all the residents. Here are three private contractors you can call if you want trash pickup.
Well, that's it.
Or you can, the other option, the only other option was the residents could bring their trash to Concord, to the, uh, transfer station Concord. Yeah, which some Canterbury people do.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I use private pickup just for convenience in life with my schedule. It's easier to just have them come pick up on Friday.
Yeah, but you miss everything that's going on at the dump.
I think that was a fairly dramatic, uh, you know, shift of, you, you had curbside pickup and all of a sudden you didn't have anything.
But I think, um, you know, we've seen several towns around that, you know, you get into a, you get into a deal with a company and, yeah, okay, that's fine, you don't have the employee, and then you're over a barrel for them. They triple their prices, or they whatever, so at least if we can, if we can find a, a way to find the people, it's still under our control. It's finding the people, that there's a, a rub, and I still think part of it's housing and part of it's wages. And, you know, I don't know if it's a changing attitude about working at a transfer station, but there's gotta be a way to find the people.
It's the trickle-down effect, right? You offer more wages, your taxes go up, is it, you know, where do you, where do you play the game, I guess, is, or what's, what's the most financially responsible thing to do?
But actually, you, this, this does beg the question, do we need a, a dedicated group to look at hiring in town across the board? Not just having police look at police and fire look at fire, but how do we, how do we, how do we make Canterbury a place to hire our municipal employees? Not like, not like.
Like using a temp agency to staff, or having somebody come in and advertise and market for us?
I don't know, towns do.
I just think it all boils down to cost, that's the tricky part, you know?
Yeah, but you can't even seem to pay them. I don't know.
Town has used, uh, municipal resources, uh, in the past, MRI, to, um, recruit department heads, uh, but that was police chief,
Yeah.
fire chief, town administrator, we use them for those positions, but not for, uh, other employees. I don't know, I don't know what the cost would be if we contacted them to see what, what the town could do to increase staffing.
Well, and the, you know, temp, I don't know if you meant temp agencies, like, um, who's the group that had, we've used in the past to?
People ready.
I keep, I keep going, going to call them free the people, people ready. And, and that was hit or miss.
Right.
Well, I mean, I asked about the ages because how many high school kids live in this town? You go work eight hours at the dump on Saturday unloading cars. If you're not running the compactor, that would allow David to focus more on running the, the machinery and the, and the stuff that's more liability issues. You know, can we, can we have a temporary fix? You know, if I had to work four minutes from my house when I was sixteen, it's not a bad gig in town. You know, mom and dad don't have to drop you off bar, you know you're safe and you're there. But we can't, can we rely on teenage help? I don't know, I just feel like we have to broaden our horizon. That helped us with mowing, you know, being able to hire a teenager.
Yeah, yeah.
It hurt a little bit when they went to college, but it was a temporary stopgap, you know, can we market more to that? I, I don't know, I don't know if many kids are eager to throw trash bags out of cars into the back of the compactor.
Well, it depends on what they're getting and what they wanna spend it on, so as you say.
But again, how do you stay competitive with the wages? That's the tricky part, you know?
How competitive do you have to be for a high, for a high school student, you know?
Well, I can go make twenty-one dollars an hour putting burgers at McDonald's at sixteen.
I went to Dunkin' Donuts this afternoon, it was eighteen, or, yeah, it was seventeen. Yep. At three thirty, they were closed because they were short-staffed.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, baggers at Market Basket make fourteen seventy-five an hour to bag groceries. That's warm, it's nice, you know, like, what do you wanna compensate somebody for different style of work? You're exposed, like, it's tricky.
Yeah, no, I, I know, but there's, there's gotta be teenagers out there that can't get to Market Basket, don't wanna wear the uniform, don't wanna cut their hair, don't wanna whatever.
Sold, I'm there.
To, to work there, uh, so, you know, anyway.
Maybe that's an angle, maybe we try to get some, some kids in town to help, maybe that's an option.
So what I'm, what I'm thinking is, do we need a, do we need a separate group to sit and noodle this over and come up with a plan? Or do we just kinda keep talking about and saying we really should do something and we're, we've got, um, David and John running the highway department and the transfer station? How do we actually tackle it?
Well, I guess I'm not sure what a group would offer, and who would the group be comprised of?
Well, there's always that. Yeah, it's hard enough finding, transfer station employees try to put a group together, so.
I mean, we could ask David, would he be open to teenage help, and maybe if he says, yeah, I'd be okay with a responsible kid, maybe we can try to advertise for that.
Well, you know, that's, you bring up an interesting point. Has anybody ever asked David to find somebody he would wanna work with? I mean, we, we had the issue where, where John brought a candidate that he thought he could make a deal with, is, you know, have we ever talked with David about the same? You know, he's over in Franklin a lot, is there people that he knows there? Is that good, bad, indifferent? I don't know.
I have never spoken to him directly about that, so I could.
And if we can't get three, can we get two and compensate the next one a little bit better? You know, if we're only gonna live with two, can we find a way to, to make it better for David and the other employee?
Yeah.
I, I mean, we're grasping at straws at this point, and.
Well, now he's got, you know, he, a water, a wider range, he's over in Deerfield, and he's up in Franklin a lot, so that's two other towns to pull, pull from. Um, he might have some ideas.
Yeah.
Thank you, but I think we all come up with a couple of ideas of how we actually find.
Yeah.
Find a track.
Right.
I think housing, I wish we put off our housing, but that's not gonna happen.
You want a roommate?
I've got one, thank you. I've got one.
Alright, what else we got? Uh, we need to go into an executive session, alright, to discuss a personal. Okay. So I'll make a motion that we, Cal, have you got, no, look at you. Alright, I'll make a motion that we adjourn into executive session for, let me find it.
A.
Thank you, RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two A, the judicial promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee.
Oh, I second that motion.
All those in favor, alright? Alright.
Thank you, Edgar.
Good night, Edgar, thank you.